Welcome to our second town hall meeting on opening schools. When and how? In this town hall meeting, we'll be focusing on how to open our schools. For further information on when is the best time to open schools, please view our first town hall meeting on the same topic on July 15th of this year.
What I'd like to do is just talk a little bit really quickly about what the Right Care Alliance is. The Right Care Alliance is a grassroots coalition. It consists of clinicians, patients, community members. And we're organized to make healthcare institutions accountable to our communities and to put patients and not profits at the heart of our healthcare. I'm very honored to introduce Sonia Rasmussen this afternoon. She's a professor of Pediatrics at the University of Florida. She's served in the CDC for over 20 years. And she's a world authority on the COVID-19 infection in children. So without further ado, Sonia.
It's my pleasure to be here this afternoon. I think there's no more critical question right now in COVID-19 than trying to decide how we can keep our children safe. Obviously, our children are our top priority and how to keep them safe. And then also to keep the rest of the community safe is a critical question. And so I hope that we can have some important discussions here, have some discussions with our superintendent of schools and come up with some ways to do that. And I wanted to, I think the plan was for me to turn it over right away to Karen Clark. Karen Clark is the superintendent of Alachua County Public Schools. She's a proud product of the school system in Alachua County as well as a graduate of the University of Florida. And she's been in lots of different jobs in the district since 1992 as a teacher, a dean, an assistant principal, a principal, a district administrator, and a deputy superintendent before becoming the superintendent in 2017. And before I met her a few weeks ago, I looked online to read about her and I saw an interview a couple of years ago when she was talking about some of the challenges. And I'm sure at that point, she couldn't imagine, as none of us could, the situation we're in now of being, trying to figure out how to keep children safe in a time of a global pandemic. So I'm turning it over to Karen Clark.
Thanks so much, Sonia, for that introduction. And you're absolutely right. What many of us deemed as challenges or concerns just even last year, pale in comparison to where we are today with COVID. And then obviously, at this time of year, you put a hurricane on top of it or a tropical storm, and it just adds a whole new meaning to sheltering and public safety and all of that. So you know, this is a very important conversation. And it's, and it's an ongoing conversation, an ongoing discussion. Because as we've seen through the school system, obviously in our community and across the country, things are very different now than they were back in March. And you know, decisions we were making in March and our way of work in March looks very different, you know, potentially now than it did six months ago. And it has progressed all through the summer through that work. So when we talk about schools and what, what schools mean to our community and recognizing that there are, you know, lots of opinions on that. Unfortunately, a lot, there's a political overtone, we'll use the word overtone, a political aspect to all of this. And, and recognizing that, that piece as well as what schools opening means to the community from a public health standpoint, from an economic standpoint, from just a parenting standpoint. You know, the idea is how do we give parents choices? And then as well as how do we give our staff members choices to move forward in that? Because I think that that's critical. Everybody is at a very different place with comfort level, for, for lack of a better word, where that we have parents that are completely ready to send their children back to school. And we have teachers that are completely ready to come back to school in a traditional setting and move forward. And then we have some parents that do not want to send their children back to school and teachers who don't want to come to school and everything in between. And I don't know for either a teacher or a parent that there's a wrong decision. The decision that a parent makes for their child is the right one. And so I think that that's something we, we have to really put out there on the table. Because I know that, you know, in, in discussions and people are feeling, you know, maybe pressured to make a decision one way or the other. They feel guilty because they make one decision one way. And maybe their friend, neighbor, or family member makes a decision a different way for their child. And so I think that that's, I think that's important to also recognize that there's not a wrong decision for parents moving forward for their children. Because you know, parents know their children best and what they need to do. As, as, as many of you know, the Commissioner of Education issued an order on July 6th that required that school districts open five days a week, brick and mortar. That's the, the term that they're using, traditional school as we know it. Districts then also have the, districts also have the option to submit an innovative learning plan. So districts don't have to do that. And so all 67 may not do that. And that's, and that's okay. That's the district's choice. But our piece is either we would have a, a traditional and everybody comes back to school or they could select our traditional virtual school model, which has been in place since 2013, where students learn virtually there at home. And those are online lessons. Our, our digital model was, was put in place after hearing a lot of feedback from our parents in the spring of what pandemic education looked like. Yes, it was virtual. Yes, it was digital learning. You heard it, you know, referred to a lot of different things. But in the end, it truly was a pandemic learning experience because teachers had to pivot very quickly. And by pivoting quickly, there were all different levels of comfort and experience and knowledge with technology. And so I think, you know, we had some parents that had really great experiences and some who did not. And so we wanted to provide another option for parents that did not want to send their children back to school. And within that, that option, that does then give us some flexibility with our staff members as well. Because if we have more students that choose a digital format, then that's potentially less teachers we need in a live teaching format so we can get them to go digital. But also reduces the number of students that are coming onto a school campus, which is important because as we've, as, as, you know, we've, we've seen different recommendations of crowd sizes and group sizes. And how can we socially distance students in a school? And schools were not built for social distancing. We know that. So what is the best case scenario that we can provide for our children? And the key to that is, is how many students do we have on our campus moving forward? So as, as we move into the reopening of schools, a lot of what goes into that traditional model relies on the number of students that still remain on the, on, on a school campus. And so that with our individual schools lends itself to those plans that are being made there. You know, obviously, we have some very large schools and some very small schools. And what a very, very small school does by way of their school and how that's logistically worked out during the day may look very different than some of our largest. But, but the ultimate goal is to provide the safest possible experience for our staff and our students, regardless of what that looks like. And I know that there's been, you know, a lot of comments and feedback about we need to go to a digital experience, completely digital for the first nine weeks. There was a lot of discussion about that last night at our, at our board meeting. And you know, unfortunately, there is an impact to doing that, which is not favorable for the employees of our district. You never want to put a price tag on a child or a staff member. You, you cannot put a price on a human life. But at the end of the day, there's also that reality that exists that if we were to, to essentially defy the orders that we have been given, that would significantly impact funding, which could significantly impact jobs, which would then impact health insurance coverage for those employees. And that is concerning to me in the, in the situation we're in right now. And so this gives us an ability to, to do that. There are still things we are working through because we even right now have parents still wanting to change. As things change and as cases continue to rise, we have parents that two weeks ago were ready to send their children to a brick and mortar school. And now they have, have, have changed their, you know, have changed their mind and wanted to do something digitally. So we are capturing those numbers and our schools are capturing them as they're coming in. But, but working through those logistics gives us the flexibility to provide choices to families, which also will give us flexibility with our employees. So I, I know that, you know, there's a lot of very, very specific questions. And some of them are very school specific. And I know that there's also been a lot of discussion about the PK Young model. One piece of that PK Young model, I think that's very important for people to recognize, is that does create a scenario where children can go to school on campus if the parents need that. But it also requires the employees to report to the school building to supervise those children. In our digital academy model, that allows us to provide some opportunities for teachers so they don't have to report to a building to supervise children, whether that's a teacher, or I know PK Young is using some paraprofessionals in that regard as well. So this gives us more, more flexibility for our employees to be able to, you know, take advantage of, of, of a flexible learning option for those that we do have potentially underlying health conditions that we need to make sure that we provide accommodations for.
Okay, it's coming back to me. This is Sonia Rasmussen again. Thank you so much, Superintendent Clark. I really appreciate your, your discussion. And I, from our discussion before and from today, I know how much you're concerned about everybody involved here. And I think that's what we all have to keep in mind is everybody here wants the same thing. We want kids to go back to school if possible, to get the best education they can. But we want kids to be safe, teachers to be safe, staff to be safe, and the community to be safe. And so I think we need to think about ways that that can be done. So Dr. Southwick asked me to give a little bit of information about kids and COVID-19. So I just put a couple of slides together because I want to be sure that we leave you lots and lots of time to answer your questions. So I'm going to show you those slides now and then we'll get to your question. So first of all, what do we know about COVID-19? First of all, it's a brand new virus. We didn't even know about it before December of 2019. It's something that seemed to be previously in bat and then some sort of intermediate animal. And then now it's gotten the ability to spread easily person to person. And we're learning more every day about it. There was another paper that came out today. And every day I read something new that I didn't know the day before. But we are starting to have pretty good information about who's at risk of getting severely ill. And one of the biggest things is older age people. And this, these are data from the early studies in China, but they stayed pretty consistent. That if you're 60 and above, there's not a clear cutoff. It starts kind of going up at 50 to 59 years. But you can see people 80 and above are really at significant risk of dying. This is case fatality rate, so their chance of dying if they get COVID-19. Another thing is underlying conditions. People that have underlying conditions like heart disease or lung disease or diabetes or other sorts of conditions are at increased risk. People that are non-white, people who are American Indian or Alaska natives, an African-American and Hispanic families, persons are at increased risk of hospitalization and death. And then we know that there's a little bit of difference by sex, that males seem to be more severely affected than women. One of the things that's very different from flu is that children are not at higher risk of getting severely ill. And I guess to me as a pediatrician, if there's any little piece of good news here, that's, that's a piece of good news, is that we aren't seeing kids typically getting severely ill. And flu, that's very different. Kids under the age of five, especially under the age of two, are really at increased risk in getting severe effects of influenza. So what do we know so far? Well, we know that kids are less likely to be diagnosed with COVID-19. Now, could they have the virus in their nose and, and we not know it? We haven't done those really careful studies to know that. But we know that they're less likely, they make up a small proportion of the cases that are out there. When they have the virus, they're less likely to have symptoms. Some kids are completely asymptomatic. And they're more likely to have more of a mild disease than adults. When we look at those kids, and it's rare, but when we look at those kids that do have severe effects, like they get sick enough that they have to go to the hospital and even go to an intensive care unit, most of those kids have an underlying condition. And so we know that there are some kids that are at higher risk than others. And we need to consider that in, in the planning. And then we are just starting, and this is really new information. We're just starting to hence have some information about transmission. And this, these last two bullets on the slide here are from a recent study that was from South Korea, looking at how often do kids transmit to other people in their household? And what we found, what the, the researchers in South Korea found is that kids, young kids, zero to nine years, were less likely to transmit to their household contacts, which I think actually kind of surprised people. But older kids were equally as likely or more likely to transmit to their household contacts. So if they got infected at school and they come home, they have about an 18% chance of transmitting to somebody else in their household. The younger kids, the chance is more like 5%. So I think that helps us to get some idea of what's the chance of a child becoming severely ill. I think it's low. But of course, we also are concerned about teachers, staff, and then the family members who those kids are coming home to. So I just wanted to start with those facts and then we were going to start working on answering some questions.
So the first question is on epidemiology. And it says, "At what positivity percentage rate do you think infection spread is too great in order to open up schools?" And who do you get this data from? This is a multi-part question, so I think we're just start in little chunks. So that's the first one.
I can take that question if you want me to, at least partially.
Kathleen, introduce yourself just quickly.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Ryan. I'm with Pediatric Infectious Diseases at the University of Florida. I've been involved with the school system for years through the Control Flu Program, where we vaccinate kids in school for influenza. And I'm also on the Scientific Medical Advisory Committee for the schools and the Health Department. So there's lots of parameters that go into making the decision as to when we need to open. The CDC guidelines say that for Phase 3 opening, it should be positivity rate less than 10%. And then the other considerations are how many infections per 100,000 population? How are the infections impacting your healthcare system? Is it overwhelming the healthcare system? So all of that goes into making a decision as to what you would do in terms of shutting things down. So it's not just percent positivity.
Okay. And then this next question is, it's been shown by several sources now that the county data is using cumulative statistics in order to calculate the rate, which is not accurate and also does not align with the CDC guidance of using a 14-day positive percentage model. If this is the case, how do you find and utilize more credible sources in order to make appropriate judgments to shut down criteria?
So the county uses both cumulative positivity rate and a 14-day running percentage rate. So that's calculated. Basically, they use more of a seven-day, but you can calculate from that a 14-day positivity rate.
Okay. And then, "As these rates have been steadily high in the past few weeks, would it be appropriate and beneficial to have a digital or distance learning plan implemented, executed now so that when the inevitable happens and schools need to close, there are less students and teachers to transition and much less of a learning curve for effectively utilizing digital learning platforms?"
Karen, do you want to take that question?
Sure. Can you hear me okay? My screen just went wonky.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So yes, and that's what our, our training protocol will look like for our teachers. Our teachers are coming back for a pre, pre-planning week moving forward to this, this year. And, and that week will be dedicated to a piece of that, you know, COVID protocols, how, dealing with that and logistic schools. But the rest of that time will be provided to train all of our instructional staff. So classroom teachers. I've got curriculum specialists here that are, are going to be participating in the training as well. All of our instructional staff that hold certificates like that in the schools will be participating in that training so that they will all have that working knowledge of Canvas and creating, how to create a digital classroom. Teachers that would be moving into a digital academy obviously would be using that day one with their students working digitally. But part of that plan is also for the brick and mortar teachers to be trained in that, but then also work through that with their students that they are teaching. So the students understand, you know, how to log in, how to access course materials so that if a classroom, a school, or the entire district has to shut down, we're in a much better place to move into digital learning, even if it's for, you know, a 14-day isolation or, you know, or however long we need to be closed, whether that's something that the, that the state does in shutting down schools or whatnot, that we will be in a much better place to do that. So that is a part of our digital learning plan.
So our next question is, "Why isn't Alachua County considered a hotspot for COVID with 5.1% in positive cases when the cutoff is 5%? Now it's higher." Do any of the epidemiologists want to touch on that?
I think that our numbers have gone up from what, before we opened up, when they were really low. And they have crept up and they have crept up a little bit in the last two weeks. However, compared to hotspots where they're above 10%, we are only at 5%. And we're not going up fast. The numbers are staying pretty steady around the high fours and into the low fives. So we have done much better than surrounding communities. We've done much better than South Florida. We've done much better even than Marion County. So we are better positioned in many ways to open schools than they are.
Okay. Thank you. And then this last one might be difficult to answer. "What do you anticipate to be the long-term health fallout from the virus, 10 years from now, 20?"
Yeah, this, this is Sonia. I think that's really impossible to know. We do know that, we know something about other types of coronaviruses. You know that there are several different kinds of coronaviruses, some that cause the common cold, some that cause severe illness like SARS, Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome, or MERS, the Middle East Respiratory Syndrome. None of those do we have any information about long-term fallout from, health fallout from those viruses. But we don't know what it's going to be from COVID-19. I do think one thing to note though is that some of it, some of the fallout from the virus could be from the intervention of the virus. So as an example, I think it's really important that families, I know right now families are hesitant to be out with their kids at all, but it's important to still keep your vaccinations up, still keep getting your childhood vaccinations. Otherwise, some of the long-term health fallout is going to be from outbreaks of other illnesses that we had under control and we won't have under control anymore.
So our next section is on policy. And this is another general question, but is it safer for students to remain at home and do classes online?
Well, I mean, I can take that. I mean, obviously, if keeping students at home certainly would, would be safer. Obviously, yes, it would be safer, keeping students at home, you know, in that home environment from, from a COVID standpoint. You know, and obviously, the, the medical experts can speak to that. But you know, from, from a school district perspective, sure, it, it would be safer because you're, you're completely limiting contact with, with outside folks.
And then this one deals with phases. It says, "Our county is in Phase 1. Would you recommend opening in-person worship in Phase 2?" That, we could skip that one because it deals with churches and we're trying to focus on schools. So let's just do the next one, which is, "Does the Alachua County School Board plan to require the use of masks?" And I think y'all voted on this recently.
Correct. So at the meeting before last, so that would have been on July 15th, I guess, they're all starting to run together. But yes, the School Board voted to require the use of face coverings in all of our school and work sites mandated for staff and students and visitors to school property. When I say visitors, that includes the UPS man. We had a, a situation at school where the, we didn't let the UPS man without his mask on. So yes, they will be mandated and they are mandated right now.
And then the next question is, "At what point do we decide to close our schools?" And I think we could interpret this more broadly, which means going forward, there are situations may arise where infectivity increases or there are positive cases in schools. And so how, how is the school board ready or different schools ready to be flexible to changes that may arise during this conflict or troubling time?
Right, so I, I want to go back to it because I'm reading the question on the screen and it was a little bit different. So I know that with, "At what point do we decide to close our schools?" That's something that's being worked through right now with staff and our advisory committee. You know, what do those metrics look like? And as Dr. Ryan said, I, it doesn't sound like that, that, that there's just going to be one data point that is considered. Because obviously, there's a lot of pieces of data that go into making those decisions. So they are working through that now. You know, what does that look like at each school? What does that look like district-wide? It could be that we have to close a school for a certain period of time, but the rest of the district remains open. But, but that is something that we are working on, in fact, right, right now, this week, with our medical advisory committee. Because I know that folks want those metrics. Our board wants those metrics of, of what we look at. But that's something that, yes, we are currently working through with the medical advisory committee.
So you don't have the answer now?
Correct.
But will those metrics be made public once you do have them?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then this is another area of concern for returning to schools with sick policies. After someone's infected, what will allow them to return to school?
Right, so on our webpage, there's actually a lot of resources on our page. But this is on there where we talk about student who has COVID-like symptoms, students that have tested positive, or students that have had contact with someone testing positive. And so there's, there's kind of a three-category approach there. And so at the, at the end, there's kind of this flow chart that goes through that process. And so if a student is exhibiting COVID-like symptoms, there's some recommendations there where a student can return to campus when they've gone three days without fever, and that is without any fever-reducing medication, improved symptoms, and it's been at least 10 days since their symptoms first appeared. Or they've tested negative, if the parent had them COVID-tested, have been fever-free for 24 hours and have been cleared to return in writing with a medical provider. So yes, there were, there's a caveat there with a doctor's note. For students that do test positive, a similar situation, 24 hours without fever, without the use of fever-reducing medications, symptoms have improved at least 10 days since the test has been administered and that they've been cleared to return by their medical provider. So yes, they are, medical notes are provided, are required depending on the scenario. So there's the first column with COVID-like symptoms is an or, and the testing positive for COVID-19 is an, is and, that the fever-free symptoms after 10 days and then also clearing from the medical provider. And then for students who've had significant contact with someone testing positive, after self-isolating, they may return to campus after 14 days. And if there are obviously fever, other symptoms develop, then you would go back to scenario number one. But these same type of scenario, we actually have one for employees as well. That's the same, it's just employees instead. So you've got similar types of scenarios here with, with timeframes for people returning to school.
Okay, thank you for that. The next question is, "Why are you even thinking about opening brick and mortar schools with so many children proven to be infected and spreading this virus? And when a healthy nine-year-old just died from this, how many deaths are going to be enough to stop this irrational thinking?"
So I can answer a little bit about the nine-year-old. The medical examiner has not definitively determined that this child's death was related to COVID. The medical examiner has not definitively determined that this child's death was related to COVID. The child died and then was tested and was positive for COVID. But it has not been determined if the two were related. It's being reported as a probable COVID related death since the child tested positive, but there were other medical issues going on. And um I think we need to wait for sure to see what the medical examiner finally determines.
In general, though, I think there is definitely concern. I think that question speaks to that, the concern of many, many parents. And I, so if if the superintendent had any thoughts on responding to that?
Sure. So as I mentioned at the very beginning, the school districts are under um emergency order, emergency order. Executive order to open brick and mortar schools. And so that's why we are here where we are today, that we have to be able to provide that for our families. So. You know, whether or not we, I agree with that, whether or not the board agrees with that, um that's that's where we are today. Is that that is a requirement right now that we have to offer a brick and mortar option for our students.
Okay. And this question is about students using the bathroom in the classroom. Are we supposed to clean it after every use? I don't know if you have the specific knowledge on that. If not, we can skip it.
Right. Um based on my conversations um with folks on our medical advisory committee. We do not have to clean that bathroom after every child uses the restroom.
Okay. And then I guess just following up with that, the question, the previous question. Do you, do you personally agree with the the governor's order to open or close schools, brick and mortar?
I think if you can open brick and mortar safely, and that may be different in all sixty seven districts. And that's what makes a general order so difficult, uh because every county is experiencing this in a different way. So I think in in any district, if you can open safely, then they should be able to open safely. But if you can't open safely, then I think we should be allowed to not open safely.
And and for your specific district, do you agree with opening?
That is a very difficult decision to make and a very difficult opinion to have. From the standpoint of are there scenarios? And and I believe there are scenarios where we can have children in brick and mortar. Situations where we can reduce class sizes. And to be able to follow that, you know, I I've spoken with several daycare providers that have remained open. During this time and have not had issues. So I it it can be done. And so I think that that's that's something we have to continue to uh work through. With with our schools, working on those protocols to make sure that we are providing the safest possible environments for our children.
Thank you. Thank you for responding to that. Our next question is about the CARES Act and funding. So with the CARES Act now expecting. The school districts to pay for COVID testing.
Right. Right. So our health insurance actually covers testing at a hundred percent, so it does not cost our employees anything um for COVID testing. So that's that's covered within our our plan.
Okay, thank you. So these, this is a couple of questions on ESE students. So how the district ensure ESE students receive FAP, which is free appropriate. Education, which is federally mandated on all methods of learning?
Right. So that is, that works, we work through that process with our student services department and our staffing specialists. We have IEPs in place for our students, and so those IEPs have to be followed. Now, depending on the scenario with the student and what method of instruction they're receiving. There may need to be adjustments made to those IEPs and those are done as part of the IEP team, so it's not just. The parent making that decision and not just the teacher and not just an administrator. That's all done together because it may be that accommodations need to be adjusted based on the model of instruction and what supports need to be provided.
And this, the next question is talking about safety measures in place in small group ESE services. Speaking to the fact that these rooms are typically much smaller than normal instructional classrooms and social distancing is much more difficult.
Sure. So we have ordered the partitions, um which will be here prior to school starting. Um and we also have face shields as well. Um so we have purchased those for our. Not just our ESE small group classrooms, but other classrooms as well. So we have that um in place. We've got a running count of what has already arrived and we're getting shipments almost daily. Uh many of our suppliers are doing uh rolling. Rolling shipments of things, so we might not get two hundred thousand of something at one time. But those those supplies are rolling into us regularly right now. So um we've, we have purchased those for our for our classrooms.
Okay. The next question is on sick days. So what happens when a teacher or student gets sick in the classroom? And will teachers have to use their sick days?
Okay, so what happens when a teacher or student gets sick in the classroom? In either case, you would send a student to the clinic. And we have um isolation rooms that will be designated at each school. Uh so if a student is sick, so instead of different. Clinic visits, you know, we have students that come to the clinic for many different reasons, not just, not just that they have become ill. Uh and so we've got a an area to have an isolation room at each school where if a student was exhibiting symptoms of 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 COVID. Or had a fever, um any of those those things, we would be able to isolate them until the parent could come and pick them up. Obviously with a teacher, if a teacher does get sick, we would need to send the, send the teacher home. Because we don't want them obviously within the, within the classroom. The question about sick days, as it stands right now, and that is of today, and all and and working conditions such as sick leave days. Are are subject to collective bargaining. As it stands right now, there are. Eighty hours of time as part of the Federal Coronavirus Relief Act. That teachers and all employees have access to. If they get sick or if they have to isolate, that that is um in place for them right now. And that would cover at a minimum, the, it would cover that fourteen day um time period uh for the ten days of work and then the weekends. That would, that would cover a fourteen day uh scenario for our teachers. If i- if something extends longer than that, as it stands right now, there would be, they would be using sick days, but there's also our sick leave bank. And compassionate leave um that they could access. That still may change, um depending on how collective. Contract negoti- no, contract negotiations go. Um but that's where, that's where it stands as of today.
Okay. The next question is on visitors and volunteers and parents and how they will be allowed on campus.
Right. So that is going to be very limited um during the first nine week, during the first nine weeks and then. Depending on where um we are with the virus at that point, um we would make different decisions, potentially, maybe not. But they will be essential uh visitors, essential to school board business. Um we have. Providers that come in, medical providers, counselors, things of that sort that come in and see students. But those are going to be extremely limited. You know, we won't have parents coming in to eat lunch with their children in a cafeteria setting. We won't have the standard classroom volunteers coming in in the in the same way. So um we are limiting visitors. We want to make sure we um, you know, limit additional people on our campuses, um at least for that first nine weeks. And then we'll make decisions uh at the end of that first nine weeks to see where we go.
Okay. The next question is, why are you bringing students into a high risk situation? The CDC's definition, definition, students moving class to class, when as a county, we are only meeting two of the CDC's gate, CDC's gating criteria. For reopening.
Right. As I mentioned before, uh we are under um order to open our schools to brick and mortar five days a week. So that's why we are. What, that's why we are where we are.
Okay. Or and then this next one, I think speaks to the emotion and the concern that so many people have, and it is. Are you willing to personally take responsibility for really any illness or deaths associated with reopening Alachua County Public Schools? During the COVID nineteen pandemic?
Sure. And that's, that's a difficult question and and it's obviously very fraught with emotion. Are we in the same scenario? And and any one of us could be asked that that same question, whether we're opening a business. Whether we're opening the University of Florida, whether we're opening Santa Fe. We don't want any, we don't want any illnesses and we don't want any deaths. I mean, no, no one wants that. And student safety is paramount. Um and so I'm sure that, you know, folks will say, well, she's dodging that question. But I think that that's something we all have to take a look at is, you know, we all, I want to keep my child in a bubble. I I do. I want to keep my child in a bubble and keep him safe. And we all want to be able to do that. Um but you know, that that's unfortunately the. The time we are in right now where we've got a pandemic going on and um, you know, we all want to keep our our students safe.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, the brick and mortar reopening plan seems to put the responsibility for minimizing exposure on individuals behaving in ways. Our society is not showing success with, specifically wearing masks correctly and maintaining six feet of distance. What underlying systems of schooling are being changed in order to protect students and staff? For example, adjusting school schedules to stagger arrivals, departures, and transitions. Keeping smaller groups of students and teachers sheltered to minimize interactions, assigning different groups of students to defined areas on campus.
Right. So we have been working with our uh principals on this because a lot of them are going to be somewhat school specific. Based on the number of students on their campus um and and the campus layouts and also elementary, middle, and high school, things of that sort. Um and so those are things that um our schools are working through right now. Everything from how students are eating lunch to how are we going to car pickup in the afternoons. Reducing uh the load on our school buses. And obviously, a lot of that also goes into the number of uh children that would return to brick and mortar schools. So the more students that go into a virtual setting, obviously the less number of students that will be um on our school campuses in August.
Okay. And so these decisions to adjust school schedules, are these up to the individual schools? Or are they being made on a district level?
When you say adjusting school schedules, when we talk, when we talk about like the start and end times of the day. That's coming from the district because of you've, you look at um, you look at um. You know, transportation and how that that has to all flow together. Uh when you're looking at within the school day and what that looks like, that is done at the, at the local level. So when students are. You know, moving into a music art or PE scenario, or when they have lunch or how they have lunch, that's done at the school level. Because how elementary schools uh work through a lunchtime are very different than how middle and high schools work through lunchtime. So. A lot of those, our school leadership teams with their um. Team leaders and and staff members are working through those uh right now. I mean, they're marking off six feet distances in hallways. And and um, you know, marking safe zones and and all of the signage that we're doing. So um that's, that's uh. Things that they're working on right now.
And on the district level, are you considering using staggered schedules or doing things to alternate transportation? Make changes in transportation?
Right. So we have rerouted, um done some rerouting of our district and actually we have started rerouting uh back in the spring. More for efficiency purposes. Um but. Efficiency purposes obviously has now moved into a COVID situation. The way that we had done our bus routes for many years were probably not as sufficient as they needed to be. A lot of late buses and why, I I know that probably doesn't seem to matter with COVID, but as we've reworked. Our our transportation routes, we're able to um. Put less kids on a bus roster. So any, any time you have a a bus route, you know, we have a certain number of kids that are eligible to ride the bus. That doesn't mean that every student rides the bus, but they're eligible to ride the bus. So our bus routes. Uh the students that could ride the bus have been reduced. And then when you look at the number of students who would be going into a digital scenario. That will pull that number of students off the bus. So right now, we have about forty percent of our students um that are designated to go. Into a digital format and that will fluctuate a little bit, but we're looking about at about forty percent right now. So if the route max, if the route max of eligible students is fifty and they're all not fifty, that's the most that any one of them are. If you reduce fifty by forty percent, you're down to thirty students on a bus instead of fifty. So instead of, and buses hold seventy seven. And now you're down to thirty. So when you talk about the maximum route size, we also have to be able to take students off of that. Because they're going to not need a school bus because they're in a digital scenario. Um and so we're not rerouting. Buses to fill them back up to that. We're keeping the same routes that we've, we've redesigned, but there will be fewer students on that route. So even in a max of fifty, in a, at a bigger case scenario, at forty percent off of that, you would have thirty. And there will be many routes that will have fewer than that on their bus.
Just a a follow up to that point, would, would there be a a maximum limit of physical students on the bus? So that in order to keep social distancing on the bus, so even if the route has fifty. But let's say in this area, there are more people opting for brick and mortar. So you get closer to a number like fifty. Would there be hard limits for in person students?
Right. And so that's when you'd have to do some more rerouting and so you'd have to potentially add a route in there um or switch some stops. To be able to bring that number down. So yes, they are paying very close attention to that because we don't want to bring that number up. And so they they are, while we have routes, we also can make adjustments to those routes. If we see that we're gonna have more than that on a bus, they are ready and prepared to make those adjustments.
But currently, there aren't hard, hard limits on how many students can be on, physical students can be on a bus?
Well, when you say hard limit, like with the, a bus has seventy seven, it's seventy seven uh passengers. What we asked him to do was uh at at a max, seventy seven max.
Right.
What we've done is said fifty max with the understanding that A, many of, many students won't ride the bus because of digital. But also there are students even during the regular school year that are eligible to ride a bus, don't ride a bus. And so that will come down even from that, absolutely. Um so you're, you're not gonna see anywhere near fifty students on a bus.
Okay. So the this next section is moving to transmission and it is, the first question is. Can an asymptomatic child pass COVID to an adult?
Sonia?
I think that we don't have direct evidence for that, but I think that it appears that's possible.
Okay. With increasing COVID numbers, are we doing the same masks in public distancing, washing hands, i.e. has? Has our precautions changed as as numbers have increased?
Hey, may I can make a comment? Uh this is Fred Southwick. The, what, what I think is is changing uh now is that we're appreciating that. Aerosol is a little bit more important than we thought and specifically in small closed spaces with poor ventilation. And we've seen that in bars and in restaurants and other closed spaces where there are people, a number of people. That even uh talking and some individuals can create aerosols. So I think there is more of a worry about staying in closed spaces. Otherwise, uh masks in large open spaces with good ventilation, masks when you're comes close to somebody outside. Are very safe. Uh the, and the next question is about touching surfaces and and the risk. Early on, we thought that fomites, that is infectious particles on surfaces, were a great danger. However, the uh epidemiology now indicates that it's a relatively low risk. It could happen, but we should be focusing more on transmission through the air. And less so on worrying about surfaces. So paranoid cleaning, continual cleaning is probably a wasted effort in most cases. We certainly should still continue to wash hands after you've been in a, in a public area. But this is turning out not to be as dangerous as we thought. I don't know if Sonia, or Kathleen, you have any comments?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's important to do the usual things to prevent yourself from getting infected with a virus. Washing hands. Coughing into your elbow, those kind of things. I I do think the surfaces are less of an issue. We should clean them, but not to excess.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next question is on. Is Disney World has just announced that based on current scientific evidence, it is adjusting its face covering policy to only allow certain types of masks. That have been proven more effective in stopping the spread of droplets. If we go back to in person situations, will schools protect those present by requiring the same of everyone there? And just to give a little context, essentially Disney World banned bandanas and masks with. With plastic filters in them and that's the, that's the change that Disney World made.
Okay, so as it stands right now, from the district perspective, um, it's a face covering policy. Um, so like the, the um, gator face coverings, um, the regular mask, those types of things are all allowed right now. Um, and the intent um, of the policy was to closely mirror what the county already had in place. Um, because that's what so many people are, are familiar with. Um, and so it could be that, that the policy is revised between now and then, but as it stands today, um, there is, there is um, flexibility in the type of face covering.
Okay. And, but does the, does the county have any, any plan to adjust that currently?
Alachua County, I don't, I, that I don't know.
Okay.
That I don't know.
Yeah, I think one of the issues, John, is that some of the cloth masks didn't have enough plies. You want at least three layers of cloth and it has to be a fine, very fine weave. You should be able to hold the cloth up in the air, up against a window and light and you shouldn't be able to see light coming through in significant amounts. That's a tight weave. So when people are using bandanas that were loosely weaved, a single layer, that was not effective. But the standard cloth mask and the uh, the disposable surgical mask for the most part are all pretty much uh, equally effective.
This is another question related to transmission. It is, why is it believed children under ten don't spread this virus? Do they lack the enzymes to replicate RNA? Um, I, I guess you, you can answer just based on that first, the first question. Why, why don't children under ten spread this?
The bottom line, this is Sonya, the bottom line is we don't know. We don't know. We know that there, and, and they do spread it some. They, it's not impossible for them to spread it, but they spread it at a lower level. And I, perhaps this is somebody who missed the earlier, or, or I guess maybe these were sent in before, but kids do spread the virus, but less commonly and we don't understand why. There's a lot of things we don't understand right now about this virus because it's a brand new virus. That no one understands.
Our next question is, how will you protect us from contagion guilt in the event a teacher or child is responsible for a death?
Right.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, Karen, go ahead.
Sure, so um, you know, obviously that is, is a horrible feeling for, for anyone to have and certainly no one uh, wants to have that uh, weighing on them. Um, I know for, from a, from a school district standpoint, and, and Fred, you can certainly chime in. Um, the supports that we would be able to provide, I mean, we can provide counseling. We also for our employees um, have employee assistance, um, where we have increased um, the number of, of sessions that an employee can have with a counselor. Um, so we can provide that support um, and provide counseling, refer to a mental health provider if someone would rather have that. Um, we can also do the same thing with our students. Um, we have some very robust uh, agreements with um, local providers, Meridian. Uh, village counseling where we can certainly provide that support as well. So we can certainly um, do that whether it's a teacher or, or student that needs that support.
Yeah, what I wanted to say Karen is that if everyone is really wearing a mask and everybody is, they, they don't have to be six feet apart all the time, but the likelihood of a large dose of the variants being inhaled is extremely low and we're finding now it's still preliminary, but the dose of virus really uh, affects how severely ill you are. Now, there are some individuals that will be very immunocompromised, have underlying disease or be elderly. But I would think that they should be, not be in the brick and mortar environment. And I think that is the plan in general. But uh, if someone is relatively healthy, if they continually observe wearing their mask, the likelihood of them getting severe disease is very low. And what we're seeing, I've just been on the service. We're seeing that the cases are milder now than they were the first round because more people are wearing masks. So masks will protect you from severe disease.
So now we'll talk a little bit about prevention. Our first question is, what is your opinion on how the vaccination trials are going? This could be for the, the doctors on the panel.
I think there's some positive results so far, but it's very early. So I think um, the, the uh, results, for example, on the uh, the vaccine that we heard about a few weeks ago, the mRNA vaccine looked positive, but small numbers of people um, that were exposed so far. And there's a long way between that and having a vaccine that we know is safe and, and effective. Of course, that's what we all need.
This is another question on prevention that might be specifically relevant to schools and this is, will opening windows in classrooms likely reduce spread?
I, I can, I can comment on that. Uh, the more fresh air you have, the less likely that aerosol will build up in a closed room. So if you can open and what's recommended is ventilation, the air should come from outside in and not just recirculate air whenever possible. So the better the ventilation and the more outside air, the safer the environment will be.
Me, so the question is, isn't it true that six feet, being six feet apart and wearing a mask are not mutually exclusive, meaning both should be done simultaneously?
Oh yeah, I think, I think the, the mitigation is better when you have someone, people that are six feet apart and wearing a mask. You have some protection with both, but having both improves that risk or decreases the risk.
Next is on social distancing and how schools will promote social distancing to prevent any spreading among small age children.
Right, and, and as anyone that's worked with um, especially younger children, that social distancing part is very difficult. But as we also learned um, this summer where we had some of our high school programs in place uh, for some uh, summer work. Um, the high school kids, even though they can tell you exactly what they need to do, immediately on a break, they'd go out and not social distance. Um, un- unfortunately, there's going to be a lot of reminding that goes along with that, a lot of education to do that. Um, because children just naturally, you know, come to each other and, and want to be together. Uh, that's going to be very difficult. That is going to be extremely difficult. Um, but again, a lot of education surrounding that, making sure that, that kids are keeping their masks on. Uh, we have purchased um, shields for um, for our student desk and many of our elementary schools especially, they have tables. Um, instead of the standard like all-in-one desks. Um, and so those shields provide a, you know, a little bit of, you know, direct, it's not that, you know, obviously the aerosol doesn't um, you know, stop at the top of a shield, but it does provide a, you know, another additional layer there um, to try to stop um, some of that contact. So um, you know, especially at, at our elementary level where there's a lot of, you know, reading groups and, and things of that sort. That, that unfortunately is going to require teachers to, to even be more creative than they have already been. Um, to, to set up lessons that are not encouraging that, that close social interaction. I mean, it's difficult, it's difficult for adults. Um, you know, everybody wants to, you know, shake hands and, and hug and things of that sort. And you know, that's just something that's going to be very, very difficult.
And just, just to ask the second part of that directly, will the schools provide teachers with masks and shields and cleaning supplies?
Yes, absolutely. So part of this work um, since last spring was how do we start securing masks? Because recognizing that every um, school district in the country will be looking uh, for these same types of items. So we've worked with um, emergency management. Uh, the state emergency management has actually sent masks out to uh, the counties for distribution to schools. So we've got those. We have purchased uh, several hundred thousand masks and they are continuing to arrive. Um, so we have those and we'll be providing those. We've ordered the shields and some of those have arrived. Some have not, but the anticipated ship dates or, or receiving dates are all prior to school opening. Um, also cleaning supplies. Now, everybody really wants the Lysol wipes that we're all, you know, going to publics early in the morning to try to grab off the shelves. Um, supply chains are extremely limited with those right now. They're, they're just not making them in the quantities that we would need. Um, but uh, the cleaners that we can use in our classrooms, paper towels, and I don't mean the brown ones that are kind of the industrial paper towels that you have in the standard paper towel dispensers in schools. I mean, the regular, you know, the regular paper towels that you would use at home. Uh, with uh, the CDC approved cleaners can be used in those classrooms instead. So what we've worked on is um, creating a um, a, a kit as well. So we've got um, materials that will go to the school and supplies, but also a, a box that will be given to every um, instructional staff member that will have extra masks, extra gloves, face shields, all of those uh, cleaning supplies that they need, paper towels, Kleenex. Um, all of those, hand sanitizer, those are all going to be given um, to each classroom teacher so they have it in their classrooms, but also a supply at the schools. Um, so they'll have both. So that way they don't have to, you know, they'll, they'll always have it immediately ready for them, but then they also will have it available for them um, at the schools.
Okay, and I will coming, we'll pass six, but I think it's important that we finish the, at least this slide. Um, and so just a couple more questions. Would more than ten students in a class be too large unless in a larger room like an auditorium?
Uh, why? I think that, again, that depends on the, the definition of too large and the square footage of that classroom. As we've said, social distancing is, schools were not meant for that. Um, but organizing the classroom space um, in better ways could potentially mitigate some of that. So instead of grouping desks, you know, four together, it's like a little learning pod, you know, you would be going back to a, a rose situation, you know, much more of a traditional classroom uh, where we're not necessarily face to face, where you're, where you're able to, to separate yourself um, from, from other students. I mean, obviously an auditorium that holds five hundred students um, would be uh, appropriate. You know, if you had a class of twenty in a, in a room that held five hundred, um, that would certainly be great. Um, but many schools don't have auditoriums or if they do, they only have one. Um, so again, that's where it goes into the number of students that uh, choose to go digitally will reduce the number of students that are in our classrooms. And so that will be a, a huge help um, to be able to reduce those numbers.
And I, I asked this about buses earlier, but is there, is there a set number of, for, let's say a classroom of X size? Would there be a set number of how many students will be allowed in there? Not, not based on mask wearing or partitions, but just looking at sheer, sheer volume of students in, in a, in a space?
Right, so we don't have a set number of that right now. We, we don't have that. But again, I go back to if, if we're, we're held to class size. So for, let's say a, a fourth grade class is supposed to be twenty-two students, right? Um, now, that doesn't mean there's some classes that don't have twenty-three or twenty-four and some classes that might have nineteen. You know, it's, they don't all, all of our classes don't come in the nice neat class size packages. Um, but again, looking at those numbers that would go digitally at a class of twenty-two, if you reduce that by forty percent potentially, you're looking at, at, you know, eleven or twelve in a classroom instead of twenty-two. Um, so that, that is going to be key as we move forward and that's, as, as principals are working to um, schedule. That's a big piece of this is making sure that we're able to organize those classes so that we've got fewer students in, in front of our teachers that are teaching brick and mortar.
This next question, this last question will be on, on staffing. It is, how will school clinics be staffed? And how will you address the needs of students with chronic conditions who take routine medications?
Right, we talked, I think I answered something very similar to that early on. Um, we have um, we've got schools designating isolation area for those that are exhibiting symptoms. Um, those students that take routine medications at school, um, you know, students will still be able to take those. I mean, obviously if there's a way to reduce that, that would be great. But you know, every student's medical situation is different, so I can't say, you know, we're not going to give X medication during the day anymore or, or, or not. We want to make sure we have um, an area where we can still do that. But I know, and, and maybe um, Dr. Ryan or Dr. Raspier can since speak to this. I know there's been some recommendations about um, the use of nebulizers within our clinics for those students with asthma. Um, that I know that maybe you all could, could speak a little more specifically to.
So that I know people are being encouraged to change from the use of nebulizers to um, an aero chamber and a mask for kids who have asthma. Um, in primary care pediatrics, they use aero chambers with masks and even down in babies. So hopefully the children can change to that. Um, that will reduce aerosols and as the policy is currently, they're trying to separate the kids who are trying to take medication at school or need to take medication at school. That will be done in a separate area of the school. Um, while encouraging everybody to limit that as much as possible. So if you can change this, the medication schedule to do it at home, that would be better.
And one last question for the superintendent regarding staffing. What, what adjustments are being made in terms of staffing to try and prepare for changes necessary?
Right, so um, well, to speak specifically to like we were just talking about with the um, clinics. Um, working with the county and the health department, um, we're, we're um, ramping up the number of health techs that we would have that could uh, supervise students who go into the isolation area, let's say, if they've got some symptoms. Um, that they would be able to have that supervision because we, the nurse can't be in two places at the one time, right? We, we can't do that. Um, so that, that's working in place right now. Um, and then the other piece in looking at um, our schools um, with the uh, custodians, for example. There's been a lot of conversation about cleaning and I appreciate um, Dr. Southwood's comments about um, you know, kind of the, 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 the mask cleaning that you're doing. Obviously, we still need to be doing that for our students. You know, we want to make sure our schools are clean. Um, is we're, we still have our full uh, load of custodians, but we also have um, you know, we've got custodians that might be on light duty or custodians that go out on leave or have to isolate because of exposure at some point. Um, we are um, contracting to bring in some substitute custodians and extra custodial support. Um, to be able to do some of these extra tasks that are needed and to fill in. Um, when we do have folks that are out, so we're able to, to bring more people in to do that. Um, so we're, we're working to try to, to, to plug in additional people where we can. Um, but also maintaining that we're able to keep our current employees employed as well. So um, it's, it's certainly a big puzzle.
Okay, well, I think that's all the questions we have time from, for. I just wanted to thank everyone who asked questions beforehand, submitted to the RSVP link. Um, we really appreciate your thoughtful questions and your concern on this important issue. And I just wanted to thank all the panelists who-
Could you, could you ask her to address, um, or could one of the doctors there actually address, there's been a post in the chat about data from um, Harvard Global Health Guidance that says that Alachua County is in the red? Would somebody, would one of the doctors address that? Because I just, I really feel like I need to get a handle on this. And I would feel better really knowing where we stand with this and also in consideration with where we're going. And I am so sorry for interrupting. I just, I felt like I just needed to kind of jump in and say that and I will bow out and I will not interrupt again.
The, I actually have a map of the state of Florida. And it's uh, the, the global health has declared that any, any county over twenty-five per hundred thousand is a, a red zone. And the fear is that you cannot control it with case finding, isolation and quarantine. Um, we are right above that. We're at twenty-six. So the, the entire state of Florida with very few exceptions is red. And the average uh, uh, number for uh, a hundred thousand in the state of Florida is forty-two, forty, or forty-four. We lead the nation. And then, and as far as states with the highest prevalence of disease. Now, the problem is our governor has mandated that the schools open. They will not get the funding that they, they deserve. What you need to do is you need to talk to our governor. Um, he, uh, Superintendent Clark has to follow what the governor says or the school won't get funding. And this is, this is a very serious concern and I think a lot of people need to ask that question and um, we have had over a hundred, uh, eleven hundred physicians write a letter to Governor DeSantis asking him to follow the, the rules of good infection control and follow what the epidemiologists recommend. He has chosen not to do that as of yet. I'm hoping he will change his mind. I, I, it's out of our control unfortunately and it is an experiment. Although I do believe and I think all of us- Although I do believe, and I think all of us, I can speak for Sonia and Kathleen, if we're very careful and clearly Superintendent Clark has the the plans and the thought behind this are very, very impressive. And remember, this is just the start. This will be, what will happen is, you will adjust quickly on the fly as we do testing, as we find individuals that do become infected. And we may, there may be times where certain areas will have to temporarily close. And there, remember, there is guidance by, she has a board of physicians and epidemiologists that are helping her. You can't have fixed rules. So we're going to have to keep adjusting and keep trying. And, you know, I I understand the governor wanting the students to go back. And there are psychological and educational reasons for that. But they do have to be balanced. And I think it's up to the electorate to for everyone in the state to speak up about these concerns because they are real and you can't deny them. So Diane, thank you for sharing that.
I don't think any of us wanted to be in a position where we had to be making any of these decisions. And they're all very, very difficult decisions. And part of the difficulty is that we don't know a lot, and we're working on imperfect information. And we're making decisions that are hard without perfect information. And so none of us want to be doing this. But unfortunately, we're in a position, like Dr. Southwick said, where we have to make some choices. We have to make some accommodations. And we have to work with what we have at the moment and do it the best that we can with what information we have now. And that's how we're approaching it. And we're going to have to adjust. And we're going to have to change based on new information coming in, change some of the protocols and change what we do. And and it's it's not easy. It's very hard. And I understand everyone's concern that with their teachers, with the schools, with everything that's going on. Because none of us wanted to be here. And here we are in the middle of a pandemic, trying to figure out how to put kids in school safely.
I'm an infectious disease doctor in Jacksonville and Daytona. I run two clinics and I work in Mayo Clinic as well. There are straight guidelines being given from Harvard Public Health, straightforward how to open up properly safely for our students. Alachua County with majority of Florida is in the red, completely in the red. The guidelines tell us step by step, do not have in-house students coming in because this is going to spread the virus. When you go to orange and yellow, I shared those on this on this chat, literally walks you step by step and says, even when you're in the orange, not to completely open up and have everyone come back, but rather children that have special need, K through five, because the rate of transmission is lower in that age, not high school kids. When you go to yellow and green, it's a different situation. In the red, as Fred pointed out, greater than 25 cases per 100,000, do not open schools. Jacksonville is close to 50 right now. Alachua is 26.6, almost 27. You know, across Florida, it's the same thing. So my concern is, we're saying we're going with the best information available. The information is saying, do not do this for our, open up in person. And I understand the governor is saying, hey, I'm not going to give you money, but that's all politics. This is children's lives, teachers' lives. Why are we not standing up as a whole and saying, politics aside, this is going to kill people in our society? Those children that are 10 and older are going to be coming back home to extended families possibly and infecting grandparents, older parents, and then parents can't take time off because they have, they'll have to care for these children that are sick. And they can contract the virus and possibly go back to work sick because they're living paycheck to paycheck. I mean, that's where I'm coming from. We have good data showing this is a terrible idea to open up in Florida with rates of positivity being 26.6. The positive test rate also from covidatnout.org shows 8.8. So I'm not sure where we're getting to less than 5.5 in Alachua County. So and this is from Harvard Medical School, from WHO. So that's another thing. The numbers are just, I don't know where they're coming from. That's my concern. And I have children that are school age, and that's why I'm speaking up as well. As an infectious disease doctor, I'm speaking up because we've seen this happen again and again across the world. Look at South Korea. When you open up schools, this virus, the level goes up. We know it happens. We know children can die from this virus. It's a lot lower than adults, but they can. 10 and older transmitted just as readily as adults. So why are we experimenting with our children's lives, with our teachers' lives? 25% of teachers are at risk of having pretty bad outcomes from this virus. Fred mentioned aerosolized. This thing is not, the shields are not going to do anything. It's hanging on the air for an hour plus. How are we going to keep our children apart? I can't keep my two kids apart that are six and seven. How are we going to keep children apart when they're playing in the pool or they want to hang out with their neighbors? That's just, it's just not realistic. And this is going to make everything go up at a community level. And then we're going to walk right into the flu season, the winter months, where it's going to be a lot worse. That's my concern.
Sorry, I, you know, I can't say that you shouldn't be concerned. I think those are all very valid points. Very valid.
I, if I may, I know we've run over quite a bit in time. I think we could probably sit here and talk for two or three hours. And and there's a lot of great questions, a lot of very valid concerns. I do want to thank everybody for attending, for participating. And I did want to say that this has been brought to you by the Right Care Alliance. We are not affiliated with UF. We do not represent, necessarily resent the opinions of the University of Florida. And if you're interested in becoming active and working with us and to have your voices heard across the country, not just with this, but with other medical issues, we certainly encourage you to look us up. We are at therightcarealliance.org. And again, thank you, everybody, including all of our participants for for joining us tonight. I can't thank you enough. And all the great questions and the great concerns. I wish we could answer them all tonight, but we can't. So let's keep the, let's keep this alive. And and your concerns are valid. And I would say, contact our legislators. Let's not make this a political issue. This is a health issue, and let's make the right decisions. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Southwick. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you for joining.